I think it's one o'clock. Okay, we ready to go? I think since we've already called to order and had the roll call vote, then the first one will be reports. And the first one would be the report from the board chair, who is me. So just want to welcome everybody to either by video conference or on the phone today. We appreciate you taking the afternoon to spend with us as we go through our board items. We had committee meetings this morning, pretty robust discussions on multiple topics. You'll hear summaries of those discussions this afternoon along with we'll be taking any associated actions during the board meeting this afternoon. All the votes today will be roll call votes. It's now because we're doing our meetings in an online version, we need our votes to be by roll call. So all of those, all the votes on action items will be roll call votes. I'd like to welcome Michael Perry to his first board meeting as our student trustee. We really look forward to working with him in the future. So and it'll be even better when we can actually see him in person and have a face-to-face conversation other than through video conference. I'd like to take a moment to thank the EIU community, the president and his leadership group along with faculty and students for how seriously you've taken your COVID protections. We think you're doing an amazing job, given what you've been dealt with COVID this year. I think other than my own home, I might feel safest on the EIU campus. So we know it's taken a lot of hard work to get you to that point. So we, we really appreciate all that students have done. Also, with this past Thursday being Veterans Day, I'd like to take just a moment to recognize any veterans that are on our call today or are present on campus. We know you sacrificed a lot for those of us who have not served our country like you have, and we certainly are very grateful to all of you. The other thing that I was thinking about this morning is that this is actually our last meeting of 2020, which seems almost impossible. Like, how did the year go by so fast when I barely left my house for eight or nine months? But it has. And we probably won't see each other again before 2021. So I thought I might give you my top 10 EIU-related New Year's wishes. Number one, I hope everyone related to the EIU community takes all actions possible to keep themselves and others healthy. Number two, that our brilliant global scientists develop and confirm a successful vaccine for COVID-19 in record time, which it looks like hopefully they're going to do. Three, that we all get to see the campus and each other in person by April of next year. Four, that our state government leadership makes progress on Illinois budget issues without hurting any of our public universities. Five, that our state and federal government leaders find some common ground on significant issues facing our citizens over the next year. Six, that our EIU leadership team has time to focus even more on actions important to enhancing student success instead of having their time drained by the past budget impasse and then COVID-19 crisis during 2020. Seven, that as a result, our already strong student success ratios improve even more in coming years. Eight, that others become even more aware of what a hidden gem EIU really is. So we become Illinois's regional public university of choice, and new EIU admissions continue to increase and outpace other universities. Nine, with all the stress and issues from 2020, I hope that everyone is still able to have a jolly and merry, socially-distanced holiday season. Ten, last but not least, I have a sincere hope that all of our brains can work as fast as Josh Norman can talk. With that, as my top 10 EIU wishes for the New Year's, we'll go into committee reports. And the first one will be executive and planning, which is me. The president reviewed actions and discussions in Springfield with the state government, particularly knowing that the budget will be challenging for Illinois, recognizing that there could be cuts in fiscal year 2022. We don't know that there will be, and we don't know what they might be. But again, we, the president and his group are preparing scenarios for any possible impacts at EIU, just to be prepared. President also gave us a COVID-19 update. And again, as I mentioned, it seems like overall the university is doing pretty well and doing better than the surrounding areas and communities, although we all know the peak that's occurring in our country and in Illinois also specifically. So the president and his leadership council is discussing post Thanksgiving, the two weeks following Thanksgiving and finals, and what actions might be best for our students and their success after they come back from Thanksgiving holiday. So they will be thinking through that fairly quickly over the next few days. Testing continues. We have been doing mass testing and have some, a couple of future dates of planned mass testing by the spring. We also will be looking at the U of I saliva testing, and we have an action item on that later in the agenda. We had a lot of questions, obviously, from the board related to testing and online versus in-person classes, what happens with the holidays, that type of thing. So there was pretty robust discussion on those items in committee this morning. Josh gave us an enrollment management report. And again, Eastern is outpacing the overall university industry. So we're pleased, very pleased with the work of Josh and his team and the rest of the university as it helped, has helped us with admissions. We had a first reading on a change to a board regulation, which you'll hear later on the agenda. We also discussed, every year, board trustees are, once every two years, board trustees are required to go through some type of board-related training. We recently had a board training via video conference put on by IBH that a number of us attended. So we discussed kind of the format of that training, what we learned, what was good about it, maybe not quite as good about, or what we would change. Overall, it was done very well. We learned a lot. It was obvious the focus, not only it's a focus at Eastern, but at the state level is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so although we know Eastern's doing quite a bit in those areas, we did ask the president to put that on the June agenda for our strategic planning session so we could do a deeper dive on what some of our analytics look like and also what our overall action items are related to those areas. So those were the items that were discussed during the executive and planning committee meeting. Joyce, will you update us on finance and audit?
Sure. A lot of good information was presented today. We had information on the FY21 budget, which we'll hear more about later on. And also, we'll have a purchase approval that we heard some more in-depth information related to Shield Illinois, which again, there'll be an additional presentation later on since it's an action item. We had a terrific report, our update on facilities, projects, and planning. So Sean presented some information about projects that are ongoing, have been completed, or will be coming up. It was good to hear that the simulation lab for the new nursing program is complete in Phase Two, should be complete in April, either April or May of 2021. And another one that seemed very interesting was the Booth Library Center for Student Innovation. Of course, the biggest project and excitement is around the new science building. But there is also a lot of just updates to HVAC and different systems to upgrade for different buildings throughout campus. So a lot of great information that was presented there. And then we also had the annual report from the internal auditor. It was a good presentation of her projects during the past year and her upcoming projects. So that's just a quick synopsis of the committee reports.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions for Joyce or other observations from the board trustees? If not, then Audrey, would you give us an update on academic affairs and student affairs?
Sure. Okay, three reports. Dr. Gudrell summarized an NSSE, affectionately known as NSE, report comparing EIU to similar universities nationwide in terms of high-impact practices to promote student engagement. EIU compared especially favorably in terms of use of intensive learning strategies for freshmen and use of capstone experiences for seniors. A challenge is to use more collaborative learning. Second, Dr. Flaherty reported on mental health and the pandemic. Like other students nationwide, Eastern students reported feelings of burnout, isolation, and stress, among other concerns. Responses have emphasized increased collaboration with faculty, innovations in counseling services, and promotion of co-curricular activities and physical activity as ways of boosting mental health. Third, Josh Norman reported on projects for use of the governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds, or GEAR, to assist students in three categories: low-income, minority, and first-generation students. And committees have prepared a 39-page report in record time, and 25 projects have been approved for the purpose of identifying, recruiting, and retaining students in the three groups. Any questions?
Any follow-up for Audrey from anybody? Okay, then Marty, you want to give an update on university advancement and alumni affairs?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Barb. So Ken gave us his standard presentation at the beginning this morning about donor activity through the first quarter. You know, I think as would not be totally surprising, your donor activity is down a little bit than where we would like it to be. A lot of that is probably attributable to current pandemic circumstances. Also, we're, you know, in the earlier part of the fiscal year, so expecting that to tick up as we go. But, you know, a plug to all of our alums listening and watching to donate before year end. We also went through, Ken gave us a great presentation on some of the impact and where those dollars are going, you know, which helped us get some more visibility as to, you know, areas where donors are expressing interest and where some needs are for the university. We also discussed the naming opportunity for the Glen Hill Student Art Gallery, which is on our agenda as an action item for later today. And then got an update on some of the goings-on with the alumni affairs and EIU foundation.
Great. Any follow-up for Marty? If that, not, then that concludes our committee reports, and we will go into action items. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the September 11, 2020 board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. And would you, since we're remote, say your name when you make a motion?
This is Joe Dively.
Yep, Joe. And do I have a second?
Joyce Madigan, second.
Thank you, Joyce. Any further discussion on the minutes? Then again, as I mentioned before, we will have a roll call vote. So Judy?
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Dively?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Abstain.
Mr. Ruhaq?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
So the minutes are approved. Next item is executive session minutes regarding whether we will release any of those. Do I have a motion?
Yes, this is Joe, Joe Dively. I'd make the motion that the executive session minutes of June 27, 2020 still requires confidentiality and that the minutes of June 26 and September 11 of this year no longer require confidentiality and may be released.
Thank you, Joe. Do I have a second?
PJ, second.
Thank you, PJ. Any discussion? Again, we'll have a roll call vote. So Judy, you're on.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Dively?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards? Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ruhaq?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
So the motion was approved. The next item under action items is a naming recommendation. Ken, I believe you're going to cover that.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bauer. It's my distinct honor to bring before the board a proposed naming for a space in the Dowdna Art Center, known as, currently known as the Student Art Gallery. To recommend its naming as the Glen Hill Student Art Gallery. Glen Hilld served as a faculty member and administrator at EIU from 1980 through 2016. He was a professor of art, chair of the art department, associate dean, and then dean of the College of Arts and Humanities. His impact on the university and his commitment to the success of our students in the art department is legendary. After Glen Hilld's retirement in 2016, his colleagues from the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences and the Department of Art and Design worked together to identify and eventually actualize a space for the professional presentation of student art for display and recognition. Glen Hilld and his wife Susan participated in early talks about this project. And Glen, who was passionate and as supportive of the art students, expressed how honored he felt that his legacy in the art department would be carried on in this way. Glen passed away in April of 2018, and Glen's friends, family, and colleagues have raised $100,000 for an endowment to provide long-term operating support for a student art gallery in the Dowdna Center to honor Glen's memory. Glen Hilld first joined the art department as a faculty member in 1980, then served as the chair of the art department from '93 to 2014, after which, delaying his retirement, he served as the dean of the College of Arts and Humanities for two years. Glen Hilld had a significant impact on EIU through his commitment to the success of students, the EIU art department, the Dowdna Fine Arts Center, and the larger arts community. It has often been noted that Glen's office light was burning many an evening and far too many weekends. Such was his dedication. Glen's contributions during the extensive remodeling of the Dowdna Fine Arts Center and his sustaining of the body and soul of the art department during the six years when the department described themselves as "living in the wilderness" at its location in the old grocery store, these are impossible to overstate. Glen Hilld, the Glen Hilld Student Art Gallery will memorialize the life and work of Glen Hilld. He saw the gallery as an important way for EIU to enhance the professional experience for art students. The endowment will sustain the ongoing operation needs, operating needs of that undergraduate student gallery in the Dowdna Center's art wing. This professional gallery space introduces students to the arts professions, provides an opportunity for students to showcase their work and curate exhibitions, and acts as a dynamic core for the Department of Art and Design. Glen's impact on EIU and his commitment to the success of our students is legendary in the department, in the center, and beyond. The naming of the Glen Hilld Student Art Gallery not only serves as an appropriate legacy, but honors the dedication and commitment Glen had for the university and its students. It is recommended that the board of trustees approve this proposal.
He sounds like an amazing individual. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
This is PJ, so moved.
Okay, PJ moved it, and a second.
Perry seconds.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? And we'll have a...
Barb, I'd make a comment. Just, I knew Glen well. I hope Susan is on, listening to us, and their two daughters. I mean, I just think this naming opportunity is perfect. I mean, because it not only allows us to, to honor Glen and his service to Eastern, but from his point of view, to honor EIU students, who he was just renowned for being an advocate for. So I just think this is, this is fantastic. He was a great member of the EIU and the broader Charleston community. I'm not surprised there was such a response to this endowment. And so it's a, it's a great, it's a great thing.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. I just think it's awesome that these people went together to raise the money in honor of him. That shows a great deal of respect.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or comment? And we'll have a roll call vote. Judy?
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Dively?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ruhaq?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion approved. Wonderful. We appreciate it and respect him, and it's just an awesome honor for him and his family. The next item is a purchase approval. Sean, I believe you're taking this.
Yes, Chair Bauer, thank you. This purchase approval is for COVID-19 testing support in a sum of not to exceed $310,000 with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois, and their SHIELD group. This would be procured through an intergovernmental agreement and is exempt from the procurement code. The source of funding would be appropriated local and grant funds to cover our expenditures. The SHIELD testing is a saliva-based test that can provide quick results back to the, those tested to help us control our ongoing spread of the COVID-19 virus. This would be, would extend through the spring semester through fiscal year '21 and assist us in mitigating the COVID virus as we finish the fall semester and enter the spring semester.
And we had quite a bit of discussion related to testing in this morning's committee meetings, so a fair amount of focus on it. So do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
This is PJ, so moved.
Thank you, PJ, a second.
This is Joyce, a second.
Thank you, Joyce. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, Joyce, you're on.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Dively?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ruhaq?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. As Joyce mentioned, under the finance committee, we did have discussion this morning in committee about finalizing the FY21 budget. I think Paul, you're going to cover that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. On page seven of your book, we have the final FY21 budget. This has been updated since we last talked about the budget in June. The primary differences are that the state appropriation has now been fixed at $41,424,300. Our tuition and fees are up a little bit due to the increase in credit hours at the university. By the way, that is the first time since 2006 that credit hours have increased. So a great tribute to Josh and the rest of the team that has worked so hard on, on trying to establish that. The budget is balanced in the appropriated and income funds. In the non-appropriated funds, we do have a transfer in from the reserves in order to balance that. But both are balanced with funds we currently have. The total budget for FY21 will, would be, if you approve this, $147,120,200. At this time, we'd recommend your approval of the final FY21 budget. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Again, this is not the first time we've taken a look at the FY21 budget, so, but we had a fair amount of discussion in committee meeting this morning. Do I have a motion to approve the FY21 budget?
This is Joyce. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second.
Marty, I'll second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? If not, then Judy, will you take the roll call?
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Dively?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ruhaq?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Then the motion passes to approve FY21 budget. The next item is the first reading of a proposed revision to a board regulation. And again, this is one that we've identified as probably being archaic and not needed anymore, at least in the form that it was as we discussed finances and various things throughout the budget process. So with that, Laura, will you cover the first reading?
Yes, thank you. So the board is recommending amending regulation for J2B to read "State appropriations may be used to support the intercollegiate athletics program." And deleting the rest of the regulation as it is written for that paragraph. This is the first reading. We'll have a second reading at the next board meeting. At that time, the board can determine whether or not it would be appropriate to take action.
Okay, thank you, Laura. I think that ends our action items, and we're into information items. And first is Dr. Glassman with the president's report.
Thank you, Chair Bauer. And it's great to see everybody again. Of course, we, we welcomed the trustees this morning, and I'd like to welcome them once again to the, back to the university. I also, before I, before I start, I also want to thank our technicians for today. Ever since the pandemic began, we've relied extremely heavily on several individuals that have graciously and professionally provided our, our video technology and allowed us to have, not only hold our meetings, but to make sure that they are open meetings and to broadcast them so that others can, can watch and listen in to the activities that are taking place on our campus. These technicians, these professionals, come from various areas across our campus, from the Dowdna, from the Student Union, from WEIU, maybe even from ITS, and they have just done... the DOWDNA, from the Student Union, from WEIU, maybe even from ITS, and they have just done an incredible job and deserve our thanks and gratitude at every meeting. This is not an easy thing for them to do, to do this production and this live stream, but they do an incredible job. To give you some sense of the viewership of our board meetings, when they are in person on our campus, it is wonderful because we have all the trustees together, and we can join them in person and share the meeting activities, as well as, you know, tour the campus and various other insundry things. In the audience of participation, or the audience that we generally have is in the neighborhood of about 40 or 50 people. Since we've been live streaming our meetings, that number has increased dramatically of people being interested in what are the activities and action items that are taking place at EIU. For this morning's committee meetings, there were 847 viewers that were following along on our discussions that we had on many major topics this morning, whether it was based on equity, or based on testing, or COVID-19 response, or a whole host of other, excuse me, items that we spent talking in the morning. And I think that's really wonderful, because it does allow the community even greater access, you know, through this strange technology, not strange technology, maybe to me it's strange, but through this technology that really is reaching a whole host of other individuals that have not been able to attend them when they're in person. And so, I'm grateful to all our technology team for doing so. Today's president's report will be focused on one of our new pilot programs that we began just this fall, of where 150 students volunteered to have a mentor in their freshman year. And this is really an incredible program that we have. We're monitoring it, of course, and we suspect that it will be highly successful, and we desire that we will grow this to the point that we can have all of our freshmen have mentors that can help them through the transition from high school through their first year of the university experience. We also, as we discussed this morning, have involved the gear funding and discussions of gear funding that will allow us to expand this program, and we're very excited about that. For this presentation, there will be four speakers today, Dr. Heidi Larson, Eileen Tierney, Audrey Kim, and Max Smith, that will talk about the creation and development of the Freshman Connection Program, and also how it has taken place this fall during these first 13 weeks, and what kind of success or outcomes that they're seeing already at this time. So I'm going to turn it over to our speakers, if they are all there. Heidi, Eileen, Audrey, and Max, are you there?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
And we are ready. All right, good afternoon. I'm Heidi Larson. I teach in the College of Education. And as you heard, I have three co-presenters today, all three graduate students and all three supervisors of this program, Eileen, Max, and Audrey. We want to thank you for this opportunity today, and we are really excited to share about this program. The Freshman Connection Program is a pilot program that is going to promote inclusivity, mentoring, and leadership at EIU. I'm very passionate about mentoring, and specifically, seven years ago, I started a mentoring program at a local high school, Mattoon, and it's titled Bionic: Believe It or Not, I Care. And what we found over the last seven years has been extraordinary. These things include a higher graduation rate. We've seen students become more involved in the high school activities. We've seen a change in the overall culture. We've seen young leaders become individuals who serve others, and overall relationships have enhanced. And we are certain that these things, too, could happen at Eastern. I believe that mentors have a pivotal role in all of our lives. So, quick program overview. We have a tight-knit collaborative leadership from a variety of different departments here at EIU, which includes admissions, enrollment, engagement, housing, Office of, inclusive, and academic engagement, faculty, the Student Success Department, and I know that those things will help us make sure that this program is incredibly effective on campus. Some of the things that we've set for goals include an increase of retention. We want to provide leadership opportunities for young adults, and we also want to build community on our campus. And as of last night, meeting with some freshmen for dinner, I can tell you, this is happening on our campus despite a pandemic. We currently have 29 mentors, and we are recruiting more for the spring semester. We have 146 mentees, current EIU freshmen, and our groups on average are five mentees to one mentor. A little bit about the program structure. This includes holding weekly meetings over a meal that is decided upon their small group, breakfast, lunch, or dinner. During this time, we want the mentor to answer any questions, to provide resources, and ultimately, build relationships with those freshmen. The mentors are equipped with a lot of resources, including a resource pack, an individual graduate supervisor, and a meal card. The accountability includes tracking freshman attendance using our D2L platform here at Eastern. What's important is if the freshmen attended. If they didn't, was it excused or unexcused? This has created ample opportunity for myself and these three supervisors to connect with freshmen and the mentors about a variety of things, including, I can't get an advising appointment. I don't know what to do with financial aid. I'm homesick. The list goes on and on, but most importantly, we're able to provide resources and answers to ensure that our freshmen are equipped in handling the transition to their college education. Leadership and continued learning happens, both for mentors and mentees. Monthly supervised meetings are every month on Mondays at 7:00 AM, and I can assure you, they do attend despite being so early. All the freshmen are enrolled in the University Foundation course. So let's talk a little bit about the makeup of our Freshman Connection mentors. We had a goal of recruiting and training a diverse group of mentors. We wanted mentors that represent a variety of hometowns, majors, and interests. And as you can see from the pie chart, our diverse demographic makeup is pretty successful with our mentors. The selection criteria for mentors included their GPA, their involvement here at EIU, and also their communication skills. A little bit of makeup overview of our Freshman Connection mentees include that they, too, come from a diverse background and have incredibly diverse needs. As you can see from this pie chart, despite recruiting freshmen remotely, we did a pretty successful job in this pilot program with a variety of makeup. We look, currently, we have 73% of our mentees are low socioeconomic status, first-generation students, or underrepresented students. There was a strategic choice to host the Freshman Connection Pilot Program at Lawson Hall. Lawson Hall, when we looked at the demographic data, had a high percentage of freshmen. It was a diverse resident hall, and it had low retention rates. So currently, 89% of our mentees live in Lawson Hall, while seven live in other resident halls, and 4% are commuters. Our data-informed approach was successful when choosing this pilot group of mentees.
So with our desire to really help incoming freshman students at EIU, we formed three main program goals in starting this pilot. So the first was to provide a unique experience for freshmen through peer mentorship, which just gives the freshmen an opportunity to learn from another student, you know, just like them. The second was to create an inclusive and supportive environment for both the freshman mentees and the mentors. And then finally, it was to help mentors grow as leaders and communicators. And we'll go into these each more in the next slides. So first, just with maintaining and building relationships, we have many initiatives in place in the program that help build those strong relationships among the mentees and mentors. So for one thing, we have our mentee check-in system, where we graduate supervisors actually call mentees who are absent for their meal meeting, and of course, not to get them in trouble, but really just to see how they're doing and see how we can help them. And mentees are then more motivated to, you know, improve their attendance, knowing that there's someone looking out for them, not only in their mentor, but in kind of the higher-ups that they might not see as often as they do their mentor. It's shown here that we have an average of 80% attendance at these weekly meetings, so mentees are really responding to the system, and they're being really open with us just about their own personal struggles, and they're just really receptive to feedback and help when we do reach out to them. And next, we utilize the tight-knit leadership we have in the program, where specifically, you know, instructors of the UF course, and like Josh Norman and Mona Davenport, can check in with mentees who may be struggling, but are coming to class at least. So that just helps with attendance as well, and just getting better connection with those mentees. And really, we promote an open line of communication with everyone, where mentors can trust that we'll provide support for them, and mentees can trust that their mentor can support them with anything they might need. Freshman Connection also focuses on building inclusivity. So most of the mentees who live on campus actually reside in Lawson Hall, as Dr. Larson mentioned, but that's just to have more exposure to one another, build that family-like community. Some groups might see each other at the same mealtime, and so the dorm just also provides a space for students to spend time together socially, of course, like abiding by the guidelines, but they also have easy access to the graduate supervisors because our office is in the Lawson basement. Another thing that we do is we create the Fall and Spring Resource Packs, so that just caters towards freshmen. It addresses topics like homesickness, financial literacy, healthy relationships, studying tips. And at mealtimes, mentors go over the weekly content, but honestly, this is just a springboard for deeper conversation. And we really do want to support students from all backgrounds, so that could be commuters, first-generation students, those from urban or rural communities. And we really take all this into consideration as we, you know, make the resource pack and train mentors as well. Again, we value leadership in this program, and so we have monthly supervision meetings where we have the opportunity to celebrate mentors and highlight strong leadership. And we really just want to encourage them throughout the semester, and it's good to reconnect with them at least once a month, check in with mentors, and show that we really care for them. Through this, we also have opportunities for consultation, so mentors share with their peers about challenges that they're experiencing in their role as leaders. And it really is a collaborative effort because we're supporting one another, but we're also learning from one another's challenges, and it creates a community for the mentors, and we actually get to receive feedback on how to better meet the needs of both the mentors and mentees. And through these meetings that we hold, we also get to model as supervisors, so setting healthy boundaries, you know, having tough conversations, leading groups. But ultimately, we don't want to just have good mentors and freshman connection. We really want quality leaders who will go on to make an impact in their classes at EIU, you know, at their future jobs, and even the community at large.
So we kind of also wanted to see what our mentors and mentees are getting out of this program. So to do this, our team went around to these groups at their assigned mealtimes earlier this semester, and these are a few quotes from some of our mentors and mentees, just about what they're getting out of the program. So here, one of our mentors, Logan, said that he's able to meet with these new students, watch them grow as individuals. He also loves being able to, you know, be someone that helps shape them into the successful students they're becoming. One of our mentees, Abby, mentions that she likes that we have a set time in our busy schedules every week, you know, where they can meet and talk with each other. And then another mentee, Allison, mentioned that Freshman Connection just gets her out of her room and meeting other students on campus. So our mentors have really reported very similar themes, where they're becoming more aware and growing with their own leadership skills, while at the same time, they're able to watch their mentees grow as well. And then a lot of our freshman mentees are able to just have that structured time, where they can meet new people over a free meal, and they're able to ask important questions to their mentors, and also can just have that social connection, which is super important, especially through times like now with COVID. Meeting new people can be really hard when classes might be remote. So this just provides another way that our freshman students are able to make those connections that are important, you know, when transitioning and trying to find their place at a great university. So kind of looking at our plan for collecting data with Freshman Connection, there are a few things that we're doing. Prior to both of our mentors and mentees actually starting the program, we gave them all pre-measure surveys that we will compare with the post-survey at the end of the year, as well as a mid-year survey that we are kind of starting the process of collecting now. So these surveys are delivered as a Google form just for ease of access. And for the mentors, the survey is split into two different parts. With the first part, just, you know, asking for those various pieces of demographic information. And then the second part of the survey just measures the mentor's altruistic behaviors, diligence, social competence, and just overall leadership efficacy. Through analyzing the pre-, mid-year, and post-measures, we'll be able to see how being a mentor with the program does influence these students in these various areas, with one of those goals being to discover the successful elements that a peer mentor possesses. And then for our mentee survey, the first part of the survey also asks for those various demographic pieces. I mean, then the second part measures how our mentees have been able to build relationships on campus, feel supported with academics and the social aspects of college, their level of involvement on campus, feelings of connectedness with, you know, one of those goals, as we mentioned before, to have a positive impact on retention after a student's first year in college. And then we plan to continue presenting our findings at regional conferences in the future. So moving forward for the spring semester, as we mentioned before, we hired some more mentors for our transfer students coming in. We had our mentor enrichment groups where these new mentors can learn more about, you know, Freshman Connection, as well as just build their leadership skills. So we meet three times over the past couple of weeks here. And then our leadership training for this new group will actually be happening tomorrow morning over Zoom. And then hiring these new mentors is essential for just continuing to support more and more students on campus, and specifically, these transfer students that are coming in in the spring. And this picture that you guys are seeing here is of Caitlin's mentoring group. They're all holding up their SMART goals for next semester. So one thing that we had, our mentoring groups...
One of the challenges of technology. So that's what this picture is. These freshmen are sharing what their goals are, what they discussed, and kind of an accountability for each of them. So now, if time permits, we'll offer an opportunity to ask questions or to clarify anything that we might have missed, or anything that you need.
This is Barb Bauer. It seems like a great program. I would think it's kind of equally balanced with what the mentees get out of it and what the mentors get out of it.
Yes, I 100% agree. And what we have actually found in the high school program, doing a post-analysis, that the mentors have changed their whole college trajectory based on being a leader at the age of 16, 17, and it is definitely happening already. They have reported that they're taking on leadership roles, they're taking more initiative, doing things out of their comfort zone, despite the situation and climate that we're all sort of living in right now. So absolutely, I agree with you, and I hope to show that through some data as well.
I think as an employer, I would love to be hiring somebody who's had experience at those tough conversations and dealing with people issues, because those are some of the hardest things sometimes.
Yes, and I don't know if you noticed, but some of these graduate students were smiling because we've role-played, how do you have a hard conversation with one of your mentors who maybe you need to be more responsible with reporting attendance? How do you talk about those hard things? And they're smiling because they, too, have had those hard conversations as a result of being a leader. So I think we've all benefited from just being vulnerable and getting out of our comfort zone.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say, that's really a job well done. I agree with what Barb said, you know, as an employer, that's, A, that's a big deal, but also, you know, there's not a lot of people who are twice your age that are comfortable having the conversations and the interactions that you're having. And so I think it's an extraordinarily valuable interpersonal skill, and it's probably the most difficult one to obtain in life. And so I think it's outstanding that you guys are doing this. And, you know, like Barb said, I think, living in challenging times like we are, I think seeing things like this is excellent. And I give you a lot of credit for doing this, so thank you.
Thank you. And Marty, I can share with you, last night, a group of freshmen, there were two that weren't in attendance. So we're kind of waiting at the food service area. And the one young man says, "Well, let's text him and tell him we miss him." And I wanted to just hug this boy and say, like, "That's exactly what we all need to hear." And the fact that he was willing to send this in a text message that said it mattered that he wasn't there, I couldn't have asked for anything more. So super excited and proud of these students, for sure.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, I could use that type of training in my life, to be honest. That's an excellent, but really, I can't overstate it, right? It's an excellent skill. And I think, you know, it is not easily obtained. It is something that takes a lot of hard work. So really, really nice job, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Larson. Sounds like a great program. I just want to hear from Eileen, Audrey, and Max. How do you feel that it's enriched your experience or had an impact on you? Like, what would be your thoughts as being, you know, senior leaders and working through this program?
Yeah, that's a good question. And immediately when we spoke about tough conversations, that kind of is something that sticks out to me. Just because we've had mentors who might be struggling with something personal, or, you know, mentees might not be showing up consistently to meals. So I'm having to make those calls, just saying like, "Hey, this is kind of an expectation. This is what we want from you guys. How can we move forward together?" And I've seen really good results. Mentees, you know, get honest and open and vulnerable with us just about whatever they might be experiencing. And it's just, we're all in the counseling program, you know, for school counseling. So it's just great professional experience for me to have a tough conversation, relay expectations, but also just promote that vulnerability in the students, because it's not something maybe mentees are used to in whatever program they might be in. So this just gives a unique experience for them to practice vulnerability and for me to practice kind of getting that out of them and making them comfortable for it.
Great.
Now, I think to add on to that, something that really encourages me is that, you know, these mentors, like, they're not getting paid. It's all voluntary. And so they're really just coming because they want to serve other people in the community. And I think that makes me think about, you know, my role as a leader and how I'm doing as a leader and, you know, what my purpose is in this. And so it just makes me think about opportunities elsewhere and, you know, how I want to bring leadership opportunities there and really inspire other students. So it's a privilege to be part of it, for sure.
It really is. And it's super just refreshing just to see how all these students are so willing to grow and so willing to be involved with, you know, just moving forward with the program and all the challenges that come up with it. You know, and I think speaking on that part, at least for our side of the professional development, we are having to collaborate with each other, collaborate with faculty supervisors. And it's just an incredible experience. And especially with, you know, the unique opportunity that COVID provides with that, with all those different obstacles too, has been a really, you know...
Poor Max. Yes. And you can tell by not only these three students' responses, but it is a total gift to work with them as my students. And we lead with integrity, and I think that really helps. And the questions that they ask, the ways in which they lead speaks volumes of their character and their willingness to impact and have such a positive influence on others.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys. Doing a fantastic job, fantastic work. Should be really proud of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the trustees? Well, I would like to thank Heidi and Eileen, Audrey and Max for their presentation today. And I just want everybody to know that this is an awesome program. This is really something that we can make our mark at EIU in helping address those issues that we talked about earlier this morning as just one piece of that puzzle to help us with retention of all students, making sure that they have all the resources that are necessary, and to have them persist all the way through graduation. And I'm glad that it was mentioned, because it wasn't on any of the slides, but it got mentioned right at the very end. And that had to do with the mentors themselves. When this idea was first pitched essentially to President's Council and to myself to provide some resources for it, you know, one of the first questions that I asked is, you know, "Do freshmen really want to have a mentor?" And my anecdotal, you know, sample with size was me. When I went to, as a freshman, to university, started my freshman year at Arizona State, I don't believe at that time that I would want to have a mentor. I just, you know, I just wanted to go to school, something like that. And it was said, "No, we think that there are students who would really want to have a mentor, somebody that they can talk to, somebody that can help them and assist them through the transition to the university." You know, "It's a different generation. You know, it's the Z generation that we're working with, and that they may be more inclined to do so." And I said, "Okay, you've got me on that, but how are you going to get mentors?" And I said, "You know, this proposal that you have has no salary for mentors." And I was told, "Well, we don't want to pay our mentors. We want them to volunteer. We want people who are going to be interested in helping others and working with others and helping people to grow and to succeed." And I said, "You know, do you really think you're going to find these volunteers in the EIU campus community?" And the mentors are undergraduates. They are juniors and seniors. And, you know, they've been here a couple of years. But they're not graduate students, these mentors. They're not faculty mentors or other staff members who are mentors. And that was part of the design. So they wanted to demonstrate to me that it was a possibility to do this. And one of the things that they did was they surveyed students, asking them, "If you came to EIU, you know, would you be interested in having a mentor that would be an upperclassman to help you navigate it?" And it was astounding, the number of responses that were, "Yes, that would be great. I would be interested in having a mentor." I thought, "Okay, that's great. But what about those mentors?" The mentees were great, but what about those mentors? And so I understand they put out a call for mentors. And they had well more than the number that they needed to do this program, which was really an incredible thing to me, that the EIU student body, our juniors, seniors, and so on, when proposed with an idea, "How would you like to give up some of your time and mentor five individuals, five freshmen, and work with them, meet with them every week, and help them succeed?" And to have that tremendous outpouring of individuals who wanted to be mentors, I just, I was blown away. And I said, "Absolutely, you know, let's resource and fund this project." And this, again, is our pilot program with 150 students. But I see so much potential in it. And as long as that's what students would like to have, is a personal mentor and a way to engage with four other students who are just in their same position, their same place, and then to, you know, to have mentors who want to do that out of the love and spirit of developing their own leadership skills and at the same time, helping freshmen succeed and not have to go through some of the pitfalls and some of the challenges that they had to go through themselves. It's just incredible, just awesome to me. And so this next step that we're going to be doing is working with transfer students as well. You know, transfer students are an interesting population, because they have often been to a community college for two years. They come in as juniors, and they did not have Prawl Week. You know, they did not have an orientation to EIU. They did not create the friendships and relationships that a freshman student would have, that has been here from the start of their university experience. So transfer students are an interesting population. At EIU, we have worked feverishly over the last years to try and make sure that we have entry points for transfer students that engage them and bring them in part to the community, so that they feel welcomed and that they feel a part of the EIU spirit. And by extending our mentorship program to include transfer students, I just think that that's ideal. That's just another step in creating relationships and engagement. And if you were to ask me, "What's the most important things for students' persistence and for students' graduation?", is to create relationships while they're here and to be engaged with the university. The more that they have input and connection, the greater it is to enjoy your educational experience, to attend class, to do the best that you can, to matriculate and to graduate. And so I really have very, very strong, positive feelings about freshman connection. And so glad that Heidi is here to lead it. She's already had the success at Mattoon High School with it. It is a program that definitely does work. And I just can't thank everybody involved enough for the freshman connection. So I'll leave it at that. And that concludes the President's Report for today.
Thank you, President Glassman. I think the next, we have Jay with Earn Degrees Report.
Good afternoon. On pages 13 through 15 is the Required Annual Fiscal Year Degrees Awarded Report per the Board Regulations. In the last fiscal year, EIU awarded 1,893 degrees, including 1,170 bachelor's degrees, 107 post-bachelor certificates, 588 master's degrees, and 28 specialist degrees. Our top, the degree program with the most undergraduate degrees was general studies with 123. And our top graduate program was the MSN Technology, with 77 degrees awarded over the past year. Last year, 435 degrees, or 23% of total degrees, were awarded to individuals from underrepresented groups. And the following pages, the student body profile and demographics for the fiscal year, are provided as a summary, as well as comparators to the prior years from 2016 to 2020. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Jay. Any questions for Jay?
Yes, I have one. At the bottom of the page here, Eastern's six-year graduation rate is 51%. And how does that compare to other similar universities?
The 51% is not our goal, obviously. Our goal is to be in the 60% range. As a result of the impasse, though, we have seen a slight bump downward in recent years. But from a perspective of our regional competitors, it's probably right in the middle of where other regions are across the state.
Dr. Gatrell. So you just mentioned the budget impasse. So this, so you said six-year, that would include 2014 and 2015 during the impasse. Once this gets out of the year range for that, so let's say in two years, do you see that number increasing, any higher?
Well, it's a function of when the cohort starts. So cohorts that began in 2017 and four would be outside of that. So when we look across the state, not only at EIU, but other institutions, there were some downward trends as a result of the uncertainty around higher education in the state of Illinois. And as we tackle out-of-state migration, I think that'll continue to improve.
I think it might be important to add, in the graduation rate, and this is experienced by several schools right now, across Illinois and across the nation, is that the only individuals, the only students that are counted in that are first-time, full-time freshmen. So this doesn't have anything to do with transfer students' graduation. And also, if a person started at EIU, but left EIU and completed their degree somewhere else, that is counted in that that individual did not graduate, because it's only if you started at the school and you finished with your graduation at that school. Well, during the budgetary impasse at EIU, you know, we had a number of students that decided to leave Illinois and go to other universities. And there is an impact that you'll see in that, that goes into the graduation rate. We may also see it from this pandemic that takes place. If students decided to drop out for the year or to move to a different institution, then that will affect your graduation rate. So it doesn't always indicate the exact percent of students that are graduating from your university. And just wanted to provide that additional information.
And to sort of, also sort of build on that, if you look at our retention rates since the impasse, we've seen steady upward movement. So that is consistent with what the data and trends are saying, not only at Eastern, but also across the state.
Exactly. That's why I brought that up. Because once you, you know, since the last three or four years, we've had a great increase in our first-time, full-time freshman classes. There's no impasse that's affecting those students. Retention rates have gone up. And we would expect then our graduation rate will go up as we get a couple of years out, to answer your question, Michael.
I have another question. Is there anything from this data on degrees awarded that makes EIU particularly exceptional among other regional universities?
Well, from the perspective of degrees awarded, what we do see is we have a rather robust degree completion program with our general studies program. We look at the psychology degrees awarded. Those also include a degree completion in an online program, which is indeed unique in the state of Illinois. Within the broader context of this report per se, though, it is functionally a board regulation to report totals and does not necessarily dig into the demographics or analytics of it. If you're interested in the analytics of it, I'd be happy to work with you on preparing a report to meet your needs.
Dr. Gatrell, is general studies typically made up of non-traditional students?
The general studies program is a degree completion program. It pivots primarily around non-traditional students who had a gap in their education. But not always. Sometimes we see individuals from two-year transfer programs take advantage of the BGS. We're actually moving on some partnerships now. That actually moves directly from the associate's to the general studies degree for degree completion for learners who may not have intended to go on for a four-year degree, but that is the most obvious pathway. We have seen some changes in those data as a result of the psychology program moving online, as well as the OPD program moving online.
Thank you.
Other questions for Jay? If not, we'll move on then to reports from constituencies. First, we have Faculty Senate with Donald Holly.
Good afternoon, everyone. There's been a lot of activity in Faculty Senate since the last Board of Trustees meeting. We've had a number of guests join us. Eric Davidson, interim Director of Health and Counseling, and Sheila Simons, Professor of Public Health. Not sure if you know this, but Faculty Senate just awarded Sheila the Luis Mendez Distinguished Service Award this week for, among other things, her hard work in coordinating EIU's COVID response. Both Sheila and Eric talked about the COVID situation on campus. It was very informative and actually optimistic. EIU seems to be a safe harbor for students in the stormy seas of Coles County. Anne Flattery, our new Vice President of Student Affairs, and Heather Webb, Director of Student Accountability, also came to Faculty Senate. It was an opportunity for faculty to meet Anne and also to learn about changes with Title IX, including EIU's new Title IX panel. We had several faculty join us recently to discuss diminishing financial support for faculty research in the wake of the impasse and COVID. And we also had four representatives from student government join us for a candid conversation about what it's like to be a student here at EIU during all of this. The short version is, it's hard. The short version is, it's hard. Some faculty have frankly dropped the ball. The students also admitted that they are to blame as well. It's just, it's been a tough time for students to be in school. A little anecdotal, perhaps, but I looked at my recent exam data. The questions that students grappled with were the ones that dealt with the readings, that's a long problem pre-COVID, but also films, which this semester I posted online with the idea of there's no need for us to kind of gather when we don't need to, to watch films together. And I was also quarantined for a while from exposure to someone who had COVID, so I had to post some online content from my classes, which are typically face-to-face. Only about six students in my class of four watched this online content. Of course, if I had these lectures in class, out of my class of 45, I'd probably have, you know, I would imagine upwards of 40 students there in any given day. So I have done a couple of synchronous classes when I was quarantined with an upper-division course, and I had good attendance there. I guess the point is, I think EIU students, especially freshmen and sophomore, do best when face-to-face. This circles back to Heidi Larson's, what she's doing with the Mentor Program. A community matters, and being face-to-face, I think, builds community. It's a community, and students feel like they have accountability in coming to class. In terms of business, Faculty Senate voted to change, make a change to the Constitution so that faculty can be elected to Senate and other standing committees as soon as they arrive on campus. The Constitution currently states that you have to be at EIU for two years before you can be elected to these positions. The impetus for this is classic supply and demand. We're having trouble filling seats on committees. We also want to give young faculty who are interested in serving the opportunity to do so. And many faculty come here already with service experience from previous jobs. We had a campus meeting about this, as required, on Tuesday, and now this will go to a faculty vote. If it's passed, it will eventually make its way to the Board for final approval. I brought up something in Faculty Senate, which we discussed, and now seems to have some traction, and that's getting the timing of the EIU siren changed from 10:30 a.m. on the first Tuesdays of every month to 9:25 a.m. 10:30 a.m. falls right in the middle of a very popular teaching time at Eastern. About 25% of the classes on that day are in that slot when the siren goes off. There's actually two sirens, one of which we really can't change, which is the Coles County Siren. But this is a very popular teaching time, and the siren also activates an alert which takes over the campus or the classroom computers. 9:25 a.m. would fall between classes and not interrupt teaching at all. I've had great conversations with the president and EIU Safety Officer Chris Phipps about making this change. Looking ahead, Charleston's mayor is going to join us after the new year, as well as our new Vice President of Business Affairs, Sean Reader. We're planning some discussions relating to curriculum changes and cleaning up committees after the break. But that's all I have. Thank you for your time. Have a warm and safe Thanksgiving.
Thanks a lot. Do we have any questions about Faculty Senate while we have this opportunity? It was interesting to hear, to me, to hear about your students and how many watched the material and that type of thing, because I think we've said all along with freshman and sophomore, we thought in-face was really important to them, and that just seems to support that.
And I think, again, with that discussion about mentoring, it's all about community and accountability. And it's just, it's a strange, or something psychological there, but students will come to class, honestly, whether I know that they're there or not, right? I mean, I'm teaching in the grand ballroom, 45 students, so, but they will come to class. But when asked to watch something online, they don't, I don't know. But we, our student president is with us today, and she was there for that, so Nora might be able to provide some input here as well. Marty, you had a...
Yeah, the synchronous, that, I mean, assuming that things, you know, as they seem to be trending towards a less of a classroom presence, there's the opportunity for that. Is that, you noted that that looks a little bit better than the delayed taping or whatever we're doing on the asynchronous stuff. Do you sort of expect that that's going to be okay? Is it, in your own personal experience, is it a short-term fix, or do you think that'll kind of, you know, people will start to not show for that sort of arrangement as well?
Yeah, I don't know what the, again, I did that for an upper-division class, so there's variables there. Is it something about being a junior and a senior? These are also students who are keenly interested in anthropology versus a gen ed, so there's a number of variables there. But I have to think that synchronous is one of the variables.
Sure.
I'm counting on you. I will know if you're not there when, you know, when Zoom starts. So I think that's part of it. And again, it gets back to that mentoring example where, where are we, we miss you?
Yeah.
You know, that when people are counting on you, you're going to be there. And I guess there's something sort of isolating, there's an anonymity of being online that just is not the best for our students, especially our first-generation students. I was, when I went to school, a lot of those students need a roadmap. They need, they need that accountability. So I think especially for them, it's important.
Understood. Thanks.
If I could make a comment, at least as a student, having the, like, what's the root for, the routine, the discipline, and like the regularity of having a class when it's like synchronous, if it's online, at least for me, that increases my success. It's, you know, we're stressed, we have, you know, like 12 different deadlines a week, you know, to work on. And sometimes when it's on our own time, some things fall through the cracks, you know? It's like, watch this lecture on your own time. You know, if you have to write a paper that same day, you know, there's a trade-off, there's a sacrifice that you have to make sometimes. And, but, you know, having that, you know, set in stone, scheduled, this is when you go to class, it makes it a lot, makes the decision a lot easier for us, and it makes us have to, actually have to plan out our time a lot better. So I definitely support the synchronous versus asynchronous classes.
I absolutely agree, Michael, and I think, I think it's one of those things that when you have all the time to do something, you don't find time to do it, right? And a lot of you know my analogies, but I'm sure, like, in a way, pools are probably less used in California than in Illinois, right? Because you can go in them any day, anytime, and so you never use it. Whereas in the summer here, you have a narrow window and you take advantage of it. So I think Michael's on to something. When you can watch a lecture at any time between now and the next exam, you, it seems like it would be easy to watch it, but you actually never get around to watching it. Versus, again, that urgency of, I have to go to class right now, or I'm going to miss this content. And so, yeah, I think there's something there. I also think that a lot of students are, they're taking some online classes and some face-to-face, and I think it's hurting a little bit of the face-to-face classes in the sense that I've had some, with attendance, it hasn't been, I think it's been worse than usual this semester. And I think part of it is, again, almost to Michael's point, where I have a student who's taking, let's say, three online classes, one hybrid, and mine, and it's just, it's like, I'm coming to Professor Holly's classes at 1 o'clock, it's the only class I have today that I have to be there for. And Michael's talking about routine, and I think that's part of it. Whereas when you're taking four face-to-face classes, five, you march off to class in the morning, and you come back to your residence hall or your apartment in the afternoon, and you hit those classes. But when there's just one odd face-to-face class in the day, it's maybe a little easier to not go.
The only counter to that, right, is life becomes a little more asynchronous as you get older anyway, whether you're in pandemic land or not. And, you know, unfortunately, we are where we are, and it'd be, you know, good for all of us to try to do what we gotta do, so.
To comment on that, you're 100% right. I mean, during, I took a gap year between my community college and here, and yeah, it was, you know, definitely asynchronous. But I don't know, expecting a bunch of new adults and young adults to, you know, immediately adhere to this, it's like throwing them into the frying pan, so to speak, and it's gonna, it's bound to mess with people. But what I was, to comment on what Dr. Holly said, I have five classes, and three of them are completely online. One of them meets in person twice a week, and then one of them meets in person once a week, and then online the next day. And so getting the schedule down took a long time, you know, to get used to. And honestly, the semester is almost over, and I'm just now, like, I'm able to knock this stuff out. And, you know, finals are in like three weeks, so.
Any other questions?
It's interesting to get a sense of what life is really like, right, on the campus, both from the faculty and the students' perspective. Anything else on Faculty Senate? Okay, next up, we have Student Senate. And Nora, if I say this wrong, I apologize in advance, but I'm going to try. Nora Ulhash Kamisani, did I get close?
Not really.
Go ahead. How do you say it?
It is Nur Ulhash Kamisani, but just for you guys, I have shortened it, and it is just Nur, N-O-U-R. So I go by Nur.
Okay.
So, hello, everybody. As I came in the Board of Trustees meeting last year in 2019 as the Vice President of Academic Affairs. This year, I'm here as the Student Body President. A little about myself, I am a native to the country of Pakistan. I am a senior English major with professional writing focus and sociology, psychology, and criminology minors. My personal goals and platform for student government, along with my other exact words platform, included focus on diversity, mental health awareness, interpersonal educational skills awareness, promotion of environment-friendly and greener EIU activities. We also are trying to focus on increasing the transportation facilities. And lastly, collaboration with the International Office to promote, to promote or encourage international students to join Eastern, because a lot of students are opening Eastern's website, but they don't, you know, really know who to talk to. So I get texts from different people from different countries asking, how do I join? So we're just trying to increase that type of program, create some sort of program along those lines. Currently, we have a full quorum, seven committees up and running. Since we started late, it was really hard to, you know, start things and do events, especially in this environment. We weren't able to do a lot of events. But we are trying to reform our Presidential Cabinet, which is basically representation from different areas on campus. And we're also trying to keep on having the traditional committees such as Student Diversity, Student Dean Advisory Council, Diversity Action Council, Student Action Team, and so on. We, this semester is more like planning and getting organized for next semester. We're hoping a lot more is going to come next semester in the spring. So this week, with this week, we have, we're trying to create these kits and deliver to the people who are in quarantine. These kits have things that, you know, a student or somebody might need when they're just isolated all alone. And then we're also going to have a wall on display with positive, kind, and encouraging messages before Thanksgiving. We are trying to collaborate with different organizations and people across campus and trying to get feedback, because one of our big mottos was, we need to stop assuming, and we need to actually ask students what they want, and then start doing that. So this was just a brief, kind of, what we are doing. I know COVID had tied our hands, but we're trying our best to work for and with our I hope I didn't talk too fast.
No problem. We're used to Josh, so talking fast, we're kind of used to. Question about student side of things?
Yeah, so how was it, I mean, how are you guys trying, as best you can, staying in touch with students now, you know, obviously trying to get, take their temperatures on how things are going generally, you know, you and Michael are representing the students. So just curious as to how you're navigating that challenge, which I'm sure is not easy right now.
Mainly, we're doing it through social media, because we know a lot of students are, you know, active in social media. I know there's online fatigue. That's why not a lot of students would join Zoom meetings or Zoom events.
Sure.
But they would respond on social media. So we're doing social media, and we're also trying to create a YouTube channel. We have our Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, and Facebook, but we're trying to create a YouTube channel, because we saw there was a lot of interest, so through social media.
To expand on that, another way we have access is, we, or at least from my standpoint, we have access to the Student Life Office's RSO listserv for emails. And whenever we have an event or whenever we have information that we want to send out to all, like, active students on campus, we will use that to send it out to all the RSOs. Since RSOs are comprised of the university's most active students, that's the, that's one of the more effective ways to get information out as well.
Sure.
Along with that, I would add one more thing. We have our newsletter, we have our, as I said, we have a few different councils, and a lot of students from different areas serve on those councils. So we spread information through those councils and those students as well.
Any other questions?
This is Trustee Dively. I'd just say that I think it's very cool that we have an international student that's a Student Body President. I just think that anyone that gets into that leadership role, there definitely must be exceptional and passionate. I just think it makes a great statement for Eastern, but a bigger one for you. So congratulations for leading Student Senate.
Thank you so much.
Other questions or comments for Nora? Thank you very much. Good luck with the rest of the semester.
Thank you.
Okay, I think next we have Summary of Purchases between $100,000 and $249,999. Sean, you got that?
Yes, Chair, Chairman of Power. The Summary of Purchases between $100,000 and $249,000 that we have for you today, there are four purchases. The first is to the State of Illinois Office of Auditor General. This is for audit costs, as required per the State Finance Act, for a sum of $121,436. The second procurement is with SKC Communication Products. This is for upgrading the... This is for upgrading the failing audio system with Endalda for a sum of $150,000. The third procurement is for liability insurance with Marsh USA Incorporated, a sum of $124,136. And the final purchase we want to bring to your attention is for COVID-19 testing with EIU's athletics, for a sum of $100,000 with Sarah Bush Lincoln Health Center. And I'll point out that the procurements with SKC and with Marsh USA are both under existing IPEC contracts, and the procurement with Sarah Bush Lincoln is exempt under the procurement code.
Thanks, Sean. And again, these are for our information. Anybody have any follow-up questions? Okay, Paul, then, I think the 2021 Deposit Investment Report.
You have on page 18 the Deposit Investment Report for the quarter ending September 30, 2020. I don't think there's anything exceptional in here. You will note that we still have a deficit balance from the State of Illinois, and that does happen as we wait weeks or so for the state to reimburse us for those appropriations. So as long as they don't get as far behind as what they did in budget impasse, we're doing fine.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Okay, I think, Paul, you've got the next one, too, income-producing grants and contracts.
Sure. On page 20 through the end of the informational section, or pretty close to the end of the informational section, page 29, you have the annual report that we do for you for the income-producing grants and contracts. These, we give you a little bit of detail on each individual item over $10,000, and then we give you the sum of those under $10,000. Give you a little bit of detail about what happened, why, and who's responsible for that. I'd be happy to try to address any questions that you might have, but this is an annual report that is required under the board regulations.
Any questions for Paul? Thanks, Paul. President, anything to point out on the university highlights?
At every trustee meeting, we provide a number of university highlights for the trustees to review, and they're all always interesting news of what's taking place on campus and off-campus by our current students, our faculty, and also our alum. I won't go through them all, but there's really two that I did want to point out this meeting. And it recognizes two of our alums in two different categories. And, you know, EIU is a special place and transformational for our students, and then they go on and do wonderful things. Not always do we know what the wonderful things are that they're doing, but when we hear about them, we certainly want to recognize them and to celebrate them. And so during the course, in between our last meeting and this, two of our alums have been recognized. The first one is EIU alum Katie Smith, who is a reporter for the Northwest Herald, and she was recognized recently as the Illinois Reporter of the Year. And that's quite an honor. That is the, that is the top, top award that she could earn in the, in the state of Illinois. The second one is equally impressive. It is, excuse me, our alum, Justin Johnson, who is an educator, educated, rather, and he is at Niles West High School in Niles Township, and he was recently recognized as the Illinois Teacher of the Year. And again, what outstanding accomplishments our EIU students and alums are doing. It's just incredible, and we certainly, we certainly want to recognize them. There are many other stories there and also links to various other accomplishments, and I hope that the trustees enjoy them.
Thanks, President. It's almost mind-boggling sometimes when I read all of that, that both what's going on at the university and the success of our alumni, it's impressive. Any other matters to come before the Board? I don't think we have any public comment this time, so... Anybody going once, going twice? Then I think we're ready for adjournment. I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. I know I'm thankful for the wonderful Board and the wonderful leadership that we have at Eastern, and appreciate all that they do. So I hope everybody stays healthy and has a great Thanksgiving. So with that, I think, Laura, do I need a motion to adjourn, or can I just adjourn?
We don't need one.
We can just adjourn.
Thank you.
There's no other business. What else can we do?
I think we're done. So again, thanks for everybody's time and attention. Have a wonderful weekend and a great Thanksgiving.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Bye.
Thank you all. It's great to see you.
An honor.
Have a good afternoon.